All right, here we go. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Edina City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, January 16th, 2024, 7:08 PM. My apologies, I held us up from starting on time. I got a computer issue, so I'm without my laptop here while they work on that. And then the Edina Basketball Association was meeting upstairs, and they wanted to talk to me a little bit, too. So my apologies for getting a late start here. I think Director Bennerott advised everybody that we're continuing to do meetings in a hybrid sort of way. People are in the audience or watching on cable TV or at the edinamn.gov live meetings or on Facebook. And they can participate this evening in the meeting as well. There are portions of the meeting they can participate in. There's a community comment portion of the agenda where you can call into the council if you're watching remote. The number's on the screen. It's a little bit more complicated than it was a while back, but we're using this method now. So make sure you jot down those numbers and those access codes and the password. Then press *3 if you're interested in speaking. Director Bennerott will bring you into the council. And you'll have one opportunity this evening, and that is in community comment. And you can speak to the council about anything that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. So having provided that information, let's call the meeting in order, and let's call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew looks to be absent today, but Councilmember Jackson, here. Councilmember Pierce, here. Councilmember Rissar, here. Mayor Hovland, here.
Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the agenda in any form or fashion, council members or staff? Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
So moved by Member Pierce and Member Jackson, seconds. The adoption of the meeting agenda is published. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are at community comment. Let's get that number back up on the screen for folks. And I see at least one of our fellow residents in the audience that may wish to address the council. And we'll take testimony from people in the audience first and then go to the virtual world to see who wants to visit with the council. No, not even negatively. All right. Anybody else wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them? All right. Let's go to the virtual world, see if we've got anybody listening in.
I don't have any callers right now, but because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, I would recommend we wait one minute or so before moving on. My clock shows it at 7:10, so I will come back to you when we have a caller at or at 7:11. What a tongue twister, whichever's first. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
I have no callers, so I think it's safe for you to move forward with the agenda.
All right, very good. Our practice is to have the city manager respond to community comments that were made in the prior meeting. And I'm going to turn to him now to see if there are any comments he needs to respond to from the prior meeting. Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, there is. In fact, we have one remaining comment that needed to have a response from December 19th, the final council meeting of the year. It was from Daniel Eaton. He called in that night to give us some feedback on the city's state legislative platform information and also to reaffirm for the council his interest and that of his neighbors in the upcoming small area plan for 5780 Lincoln Drive. At the January 2nd, 2024 council meeting, we had two comments. One was from Mr. David Frankel. He was concerned about our liquor profits, our municipal liquor profits. And I have to say, so are we from a city staff standpoint. I will tell you that one of the things that we have started to figure out is really where the issues are within our system. What is measured by the State Auditor's Office in the 2022 report was net income. And our net income was down from $780,000 in 2021 to $624,000 in 2022. Part of that issue would... The first thing we want to look at is what are our sales? What's happening with our sales? Our sales are as strong now as they have been ever. Really, the areas where we're starting to see some impact are our own operating, our internal operating costs. We had about $350,000 of advanced operating costs over and above what we were budgeting for 2022. And that's really the biggest impact on our net income number. Some of that came from a lack of investment income. Some of that came from really an enormous increase in credit card processing fees, and we're hearing that from a lot of retailers. And also then, there's also a sizable increase in the size of our own internal service charges. So those internal service charges that are calculated by the city, included in the budget, that cover sort of the corporate overhead parts of our business. So our IT, HR, other investment kind of income, those have costs that we charge back out to our liquor operations, our golf operations, and then those charges fund, provide funding in those separate budgets that we show you that are called internal service funds. And that's where that's showing. So we need to look at those charges again, I think, and adjust them if we can because they're starting to have this impact on our net income. So we are looking at that and continuing to make some progress. The other comment from that on January 2nd was from Mr. Zickert. And he had a number of things to say about our finances in our water utility. I think the most important thing that he had to say was he felt like his questions and our responses were just getting out of sync too far. He has questions, we answer them. He doesn't feel like we're answering the questions that he posed, and we're just never getting in sync with that. What I think I would like to do, and he's here tonight, he doesn't have to answer this tonight, but I would like to invite him in to meet with me and my staff and really just sit down and go through his questions and his concerns and lay out the data that we have and see if we can't come to a common understanding of what we're trying to do. I think that would be a good way to get to the bottom of his concerns. And that's all we have.
Mr. Zickert, would you... It's hard to catch you from that distance. Would you mind coming up to the microphone, please? Thank you. And then identify yourself and give us your address.
Sure. My name is Ralph Zickert. I live at 4311 Cornelia Circle.
Thank you.
Mr. Neal, I'd be more than willing to do that. It's the first time it's ever been offered here since a year ago. And what I would like tonight is a simple answer, yes or no. Did commercial water rates, were commercial water rates decreased from 2022 to 2023? And do they remain yet below what they were in 2022? And that's a simple question that's been asked a number of times that hasn't been answered. So as was stated last meeting, your own finance director in the work session said that those rates had decreased. And that's been a fundamental question I've had for the last nine months. And the resulting question of how does that lead to conservation? So if you could answer yes or no tonight whether commercial water rates did in fact decrease, that would be appreciated.
I can reach out to set a meeting up with you. I'll attend that meeting along with our finance staff. In terms of what has happened to our commercial water rates, it's more complicated than a yes or no. I'd say on the lower end, yes, they decreased. On the upper end, yes, they increased. It has resulted in more water sales, more revenue, unfortunately. So one of the attributes of our water utility rate system is conservation, but the rest of them are all pointing in the direction of making sure we have sufficient funding to operate the water utility and also for capital expenses as well. But I'd welcome the opportunity to kind of lay those out and have that conversation with you.
Let's talk just a minute about the liquor operations because Mr. Frankel last week raised the question about, I think embedded in his comment was a notion of, well, why are liquor operations netting less revenue over time? And this is an issue that I think we've been wondering about as well in the past. But at one point in time, when Total Wine came in on the Edina border, we had the same issue. And our net revenues, I remember, were well over $1 million at the time. And then Total Wine came in, and we dropped to about $600,000 something thousand in net revenue. And then we hired a task force of local residents to look at the issue. And I think this is, at least in part, why, along with effective management, why our liquor sales are still staying strong. But if you think you could benefit from any assistance from residents or some of those folks that served on the task force before, I'm sure they'd be willing to come back and assist the city again. Or if you think it can just be something that you deal with internally and develop a strategy around that, I think we'd leave that to your judgment. But I think all of us are concerned that we've seen that progression down on net revenue.
I think the thing that's fundamentally different about what's happening today versus what happened with the introduction of Total Wine on our border is that that action had an almost instantaneous negative impact on our operating revenues, on our sales. And that was really the biggest benefit we got from the task force is how do we compete? And what can you do to tell us that? I think what's different about this time is that we're looking at, really, some factors that are under our control, whether they are internal service charges, are there different ways that we can use credit card processing? Those are things that really aren't our more business practice and less about marketing and sales. I think we'd like to give this a try with our internal management team. They know what the challenge is, and they're working on some things right now.
And I think I understand that you're looking at options relative to credit card processing fees right now.
We are.
At least, that's my understanding. All right, good. We'll wait for more information on that topic. All right, next we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Otherwise, undertake a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the items on the consent portion of the agenda in a single motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Those are all adopted. And now we're on to special recognitions and presentations. And, you know, years ago, we had the SALT treaty. Remember that? It was nuclear disarmament. Now we've got our own SALT team. And they've been hard at work for several years now over at the legislature doing some really important work. And they're with us tonight. But the first thing we have is a proclamation. And I've been requested to read this proclamation on behalf of the council. And the proclamation is dealing with what's called Winter Salt Awareness Week, which starts January 22nd, runs through the 26th, 2024. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the city of Edina relies on de-icing salt as part of its winter maintenance program to maintain safe and accessible roadways, and whereas all the salt applied to roadways ends up in our freshwater, and whereas chloride contamination from de-icing salt has been found in lake streams and groundwater in Edina's Nine Mile Creek and many Haha Creek watersheds and across the state. And whereas reducing overuse of de-icing salt reduces damage to infrastructure and property, protects freshwater resources, and reduces harm to aquatic plants and animals. And whereas it is crucial to raise awareness among residents, businesses, and local government agencies about the responsible use of de-icing salt to protect both public safety and long-term health of our freshwater resources. And whereas Winter Salt Awareness Week provides an opportunity to educate our community about the responsible use of de-icing salt, including environmental considerations and effective application methods. And whereas residents of Edina can contribute to de-icing salt pollution reduction efforts locally by learning about smart salting practices, engaging in safe winter driving, hiring trained service providers, and participating in the Low Salt, No Salt Minnesota Program. And whereas the city is committed to promoting a sustainable approach to winter maintenance for the benefit of present and future generations, now therefore we, the city council of the city of Edina, do hereby proclaim January 22nd to the 26th, 2024 as Winter Salt Awareness Week in the city of Edina and urge all residents, businesses, and city departments to take part in activities and initiatives that promote the responsible use of de-icing salt and encourage the adoption of winter maintenance strategies which maintain safety while reducing environmental harm. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
Still moved.
Second. Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the Winter Salt Awareness Week proclamation. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the proclamation as read, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, proclamation is adopted. And, well, we've got Jessica Wilson here with us this evening, our Water Resources Manager and one of our residents who's worked so diligently on this issue along with improving West 54th Street and the design of the street over there. That's, I think, really been a benefit to the neighborhood and the city, the way it was redesigned. Sue Nissen, our resident and a true champion for reducing chloride pollution in the city of Edina and beyond. So Ms. Wilson, welcome. And I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am joined by celebrity Sue Nissen here. As you said, champion for chloride reduction and really proud to be able to work with her for the last several years on this issue. And I encourage you and anyone living or working in Edina to attend some lunchtime webinars during that week that our neighbors over in Wisconsin at Wisconsin Saltwise are putting together. And with that, I'll pass it over to Sue for a moment.
All right, thank you. And I see that she... I think I've still got my spoon at home with the lanyard on it, yeah.
Perfect, because one teaspoon of salt permanently pollutes five gallons of freshwater. And it's a very toxic, powerful substance. And so this proclamation is important because of all the reasons you read, the negatives to salt. It's a relatively newcomer in the list of pollutants, but it is going to be a huge problem down the road for aquatic life, for human life, for infrastructure. It's an expensive problem coming. And we should do everything we can to raise awareness about the salts, not only the problems, but the opportunities, the best practices and the best practice policies that Minnesota is adopting are all out there for us to embrace. So awareness is the start. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm going to come down here. I see that Director Bennerott has her camera handy. I think she wants us to take a photo of you receiving the proclamation.
Couple more, just in case we have a blinker. Perfect, thank you.
All right, we are on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. And the first matter there is Resolution 2024-09, Accepting Donations on Behalf of the City. We have to do that by state law. And so is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-09?
So moved.
Second. Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2024-09, which accepts certain donations in this reporting period to the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2024-09, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Resolution 2024-09 is adopted. And I'm going to let Member Jackson read the donors' names because I don't have a computer.
Oh, well, we've got two donations from the Edina Crime Prevention Fund. $1,935 for the retired canine expenses and $6,742 for bicycle motorcycle expenses.
All right, very good. Thank you for doing that. And then we're on to the adoption of the 2024 state legislative platform, which has had, I think, good discussion at work sessions, both the council and then a live session here in City Hall on a Thursday morning with the HRA, both removing, what were they, 2.4 and 2.5 from the legislative agenda, which dealt with some affordable housing matters. And so does anyone care to move the adoption of the 2024 state legislative platform in its present form?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the state legislative platform with the public safety... Was there... No. Yeah, I guess there was a public safety additions, but, yeah.
They're included.
Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the 2024 state legislative platform for the city of Edina with the public safety addition, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried.
Mr. Mayor, this did not include the federal things. Is that coming?
It is.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right. Yeah, so for folks in the audience, we'll have a federal agenda as well. This is our state legislative agenda, and we'll be working on issues over there. In fact, we could report out that we had the Senate Bonding Committee here this morning. Met them over at the Grange Hall. I was able to be there. Member Jackson was able to be there. And there was a pretty good turnout by the Senate Bonding Committee. Those state senators had an excellent presentation from Director Milner. I thought you knew they were on the clock, and you were quick. And our fire chief also did an excellent job. And I think my sense is they left you thinking this was a worthy project, especially... It's not that often where you have a bonding request that involves three units of government. I think that gives us some real possibilities there in terms of approval. And then all the other things that you talked about that are important to everyone these days, which are primarily non-motorized movements, I think is really a significant issue. And then the equity portions of it as well. So good job this morning. All right, so now we've... This meeting is going by fast here. We're already at the commission correspondence. I don't think we've had anything come in other than what we had in our packet, if you will. And we can turn now to managers' comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. One of my comments was around the bonding bill tour, and so we had a chance to talk about that already. I thought one of the other interesting aspects of that presentation today was just the venue for it, the Grange Hall. It really reminded me that we have this very nice facility. It has a historical connection to Edina and to us. And perhaps we could have a work session or something there at some point. It's not set up for video very well. Comfort isn't its first priority. But really, it gives you a great feeling of that connection to the past of the city. So we'll think about what we could do with that in the future. National League of Cities, Congressional Cities Conference this year is March 11th through the 13th. This is an even-numbered year, which means that by policy, we limit our attendance to three electeds. We usually make those decisions by time in office and then by vote totals. So we'll talk to you about how to do that. But we do need to have some decisions made fairly soon in order to secure travel arrangements and lodging arrangements. So we'll be talking to you about that very soon. Finally, a new issue that has not had any council discussion at this point or commission discussion, I think, at this point is the issue that is being dealt with by the Hennepin County Board of Commissioners right now regarding the Hennepin Energy Recovery Center, the HERC. And a goal to have the HERC shut down by starting sometime between 2028 and 2040. There are included tonight at the dais for council members, and these can be made available to the public easily as well, three examples of how three different communities, Bloomington, Plymouth, and Maple Grove, have communicated to their county board officials on this issue. We don't have anything for you to act on tonight, but I can tell you that I'm seeing most of our neighbors are taking a similar position to what Bloomington has taken. So I just really wanted to get this out in front of you tonight, give you a chance to read a few examples of how cities are responding to this and think about how and when you want to give some direction to staff on this. And with that, Your Honor, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, that's a... You know, I was in a meeting a week or so ago. I didn't see... Anybody ever been to the pig on the porch in Loretto? Northwest Hennepin mayors were meeting out there along with one of the county commissioners. And we talked about the HERC. Our haulers don't apparently use the HERC, but nonetheless, it's really critically important that it stay open, I think, because the alternative is you send everything to a landfill, so you just expand landfill operations. And the technologies are changing rapidly. I know the folks in that immediate neighborhood down there are concerned about greenhouse gas production and other possible contaminants that could be harmful to human beings. But I think it's important to be talking about it and supporting the careful closure of this thing at some point in time, whether it's 2028 or later. So, all right, let's go right down the line and start with Member Rissar.
I do not have any comments tonight.
Okay. And Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you. So to just elaborate a little bit more on the bonding committee, we're talking about getting state money to help rebuild the bridge of Vernon/50th over 100. It's a state-owned bridge, and it would be in conjunction with a county bridge over the railroads and our own funding for sidewalks and making that a more accessible bridge. But it was right at the Grange Hall. So the really cool thing is all the senators could just look... As they left, they stopped, went out on the boardwalk, and looked right at the site. And I pointed to one senator. I'm like, there could be a fire station right there. She's like, right there? I'm like, yeah, right there. So it was a really wonderful visual and a great job by staff. The other thing is, I had a... I was in a meeting with one of the Bloomington City Council members. And one of the points that she raised about the closing of the HERC is the causation between the health problems with people who are living in the nearby neighborhood and the HERC itself and whether it's coming from... Whether the asthma and effects of residents is coming from the highway or from the HERC. I hope that if we do this, we talk a little bit about causation because we want to be really aware of the environmental justice aspect of this. But also, if we're going to go to close this down, 1,000 tons of garbage a day is incinerated. We want to make sure that it's an effective move. So I hope that that's part of our analysis when we look at this because we want people to be healthy. And this is going to be a big, expensive, and inconvenient move. And we want to make sure that it reaches the ends that's intended. So that's it, thank you.
All right, good, thank you. Member Pierce?
Nothing from me tonight.
Okay. One thing for me, and that was... And I mentioned this, I think, in our HRA meeting. A week ago yesterday, and I actually left a week ago, this past Sunday... I'll back up a little bit more. I think folks in our community know I think folks in our community know that I'm the current Chair of the U.S. Conference of Mayors Standing Committee on Transportation. And there's been a big push federally at USDOT by Secretary Buttigieg on what's called Vision Zero. And that's the attempt to reduce the number of fatalities that have occurred on our city streets and interstate systems all throughout our transportation infrastructure. And so, this whole idea of achieving or working towards Vision Zero is going to be a more and more significant thing as we move along here, because, you know, for as long as we've been around, we've been, there's been 40,000 to 50,000 people a year dying on, from traffic fatalities. And Member Risher brought this up in the context, a little bit different context, but it's like we've become culturally accepting of the fact that a lot of people, some of them are friends and neighbors or residents, are dying on these traffic accidents. So, they, in conjunction with the Transportation Research Board, and that's a group that meets annually, and there's like 10,000 people that show up in Washington, D.C. for the week of the Transportation Research Board activities, and they look at things like, you know, what's the latest, greatest from a technology standpoint on traffic management and, I suppose, you know, self-driving cars. And then it's materials that they look at, the road materials, and a multitude of different things. And as I walked around the convention center in D.C., I could see people from all over the world were there. Well, when they looked at this Vision Zero and they looked at how they wanted to populate a panel, they thought, well, let's have a local elected official come to Washington, D.C. to be part of this panel on Achieving Vision Zero: Advances in Roadway Safety, which was Monday, January 8th. And so, they apparently looked at data and discovered that Edina has a really low history of fatalities on our local streets. It's been, according to our staff, I think, 21 years or more since we've had a fatality on a local street. And so, they picked up on this and called me and said, well, would you come out and represent local governments? At least talk about what one town is doing or has done around trying to keep people safe from a traffic fatality standpoint. So, I went out there, and Chad, Director Milner, and Andrew Cipione, Chief Milburn, and Bill Newendorf all helped me prepare this very, we had to be real short on the presentation, because there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people, six people on the panel. It was, it was me representing cities. It was a guy named Carlos Praseras, who is the Executive Director of the Utah Department of Transportation. A woman named Leah Shahum, who is a founder and director of a nonprofit in San Francisco called Vision Zero Network. And then Robert Hampshire, the Deputy Assistant Secretary for Research and Technology at the USDOT, and a woman named Sophie Schulman, who is the Deputy Administrator for NHTSA, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. And then the panel moderator was the U.S. Secretary, Deputy Secretary of Transportation, Paulie Trottenberg, who was a former head of transportation for New York City. And so, she moderated the whole thing, and then we each got to make a little presentation. So, we could queue up ours on Edina, and I can just kind of run through it real quickly because everybody ended up creating, that worked on this, a really concise and, I thought, wonderful little PowerPoint presentation around the six Es. And then we tried to provide, you know, some testimony and also, you know, the photographs that are always worth 1,000 words. So, you can just kind of see that first one, and I just talked about that generally. And I went into some of the things that we've worked on over the years in terms of the road diets and traffic calming in every project and the things that Chad and his team have worked on. And now we've done, I think, about 100 miles worth of our, we've got about half of our streets done. And so, we've been reducing the width of streets, and that has a traffic calming effect. Go ahead, Jennifer. And then we gave an example of one of our new roundabout out by, on Interlochen and Blake Road as a, as a reducer of risk for people, because on a roundabout, you get four points of potential conflict as opposed to eight points at a regularly controlled traffic intersection, controlled by a traffic light. Go ahead. And then we talked about the Drive 25 effort, the effort that our city, along with others, made at the State Legislature to reduce speed limits on city streets and how that was successful and the things we've been doing there, and then prioritizing multimodal movements. Go ahead, Jennifer. And then the, on the encouragement and enforcement side, we gave them some data around the success of our officers on DWI arrests, around 300 annually. And then I was kind of surprised at the number of traffic citations we issue at 6,800, which was up 30% from 2022. People are moving faster because the roads are less congested, I think, in part. People seem to be more anxious about getting from A to B. And so, that's another thing we've got to be thinking about and working on. And then these partnerships that we have with the school district and our own Traffic Safety Committee, we talked about that. And then, of course, they got to see some of these photos of Edina. Go ahead, Jennifer. And then I thought, well, from an innovation standpoint, we could talk about one of these things that's in the real beginning stages, and that's the possibility of finding a way for pedestrians to get safely across and bicyclists, non-motorized folks, get safely across France Avenue, across this eight-lane county road. So, that was, those are the things I just mentioned generally at the, at the panel. The panel lasted an hour and a half. We had a lot of good questions. The woman who runs a nonprofit in San Francisco looked down the line when I got done with the Edina presentation, and when it came to her, she said, hmm, she said, I'm kind of thinking about looking and moving to Edina. So, that was a nice compliment for all of us, I thought, that these, our staff had really put together an effective little PowerPoint presentation. So, it was a nice thing to be able to represent cities, but also, especially nice, I'd say, to be able to represent our own city of Edina and talk a little bit about some of the strategies that we've used over time to reduce risk for people, whether they're in an automobile or on a bike or on foot. So, that's, that's it for the, what happened there in Washington, D.C. And I went out there to the TRB, and I think that's it, isn't it, Jennifer? Is that the end of it? Yeah. Okay, so that's it for me. Now, the only other thing on the agenda this evening is the City Manager's Performance Review. And we have had that work done by a fellow named Craig Waldron from the Waldron Company, and he's submitted to us his written City Manager Evaluation Report. By law, I'm required, or somebody's required to, at the next open meeting after this closed session, and we had a closed session to talk about the performance review, which is allowed under state law for privacy purposes, primarily in terms of the employee. And so, but nonetheless, when you moved in, when you move into open session at the next open meeting, this is, and this is information provided by our city attorney, Dave Kendall, the public body must summarize its conclusions regarding the evaluation. And so, and we got to be really cautious about making sure that in the context of releasing those conclusions, we don't release any private or confidential data in that summary. So, as I looked at Craig Waldron's report, I thought, yeah, there are things that we can easily talk about, those salient points that we must cover. And there were things like general leadership, and Waldron uses a method, as we, as we learned and could see from the work that he did, that is qualitative in nature, uses an interview technique, both with all the City Council members and key staff members, directors and otherwise. And from, and this is from a perspective, I think, of all of us, whether your staff or on the Council, the general leadership skills that Scott has, especially amongst the people that work for him, he has the absolutely incredible staff support, according to Waldron, and we know that too from working in the city, that his ethics and his character rank high, very, very high in this area, highly respected by his peers and his, the folks that work for him. They respect his judgment, his departmental directors completely believe in and support his judgment on everything. And they had a summary of staff perspectives in there. When we talked about, you know, we would say, nobody's perfect. All of us know that. None of us are perfect. We're human beings. And so, what are the things that we can do better, and how can we do better, and how can we assist Scott in doing things better? Because he's, he's running a really sophisticated organization that has over $100 million in gross revenue a year with 250-plus full-time employees and 900 full and part-time employees in the summertime. And we talked about some things that were communication-related that we're all going to work on together, building better communication with, I think, our residents, building more comprehensive sort of narratives around particular topics that are important to be addressing in time. And then we also are going to take a close look at some of the requirements around, legal requirements around meeting minutes and agenda requirements and making sure that we were doing things the right way there. So, those are kind of the general highlights, I'd say, of the, of the, of the performance review. And then I think we're going to talk a little bit about tonight, the next step would be, he's under a contract, and what we've done in the past is the mayor and the mayor pro tem have taken on the task of interviewing Scott with respect to the extension of his contract, and then deciding what to recommend to the Council in terms of a potential salary increase, if any, and the duration of the contract as well. I think all those kind of key terms and conditions of continued employment are important to Scott and important to us and important to our community. So, if folks are comfortable with that sort of historic model that we use, that's not embedded in any code, that practice of having the mayor and the, and the mayor pro tem take on that task of coming back to you maybe within a month or so with some recommendations on, on the contract itself and compensation, if that's something people are comfortable with, we can do that. Member Jackson?
I just wanted to add a little historic perspective that was part of our conversation, that because of the salary cap, we haven't had to have a meeting like this in recent years. And now that the salary cap has been lifted, this is going back to a practice that we did in the teens, in the 20 teens. So, this is, this is a reversion to a historic practice.
Great point. Yeah, for those that, I think most people probably wouldn't be aware that for years and years and years, probably decades, salaries of city managers were tied to the governor's salary, and it can only be at variance with the governor's salary if you ask for an exemption or variance from the, from the law. And there were all kinds of other people that were exempt, like superintendents of schools and other categories of people that were exempt from this salary cap. So, we, that salary cap limitation was eliminated last year at the State Legislature. And it's also had the effect, I think, that most cities think of creating some salary compression, where if everything's tied to the city manager's salary in a particular city, you know, are you, are you treating your people correctly that are below the city manager in terms of compensation and thinking about getting the best people you can working for you and delivering the best possible outcome for our residents? So, thank you, Member Jackson, for making that point. I think it's an important one that we consider as we go along here. So, I don't know if anybody else has any other comments they wish to make that are general in nature, without getting into any of the private or confidential data, feel free. So, okay. Thank you, Manager Neal, for your continuing work on behalf of the residents of our town and your work with us, which has been exemplary, I'd say. Okay, now, that's the City Manager's Performance Review. And if that didn't cause anybody to think of anything else they wanted to talk about that they forgot about earlier, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Member Jackson moves we adjourn the meeting of the City Council this 16th day of January 2024. Member Pierce seconds that motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjourning the City Council meeting of January 16, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. We stand adjourned.